Okay, it's five thirty at the appointed hour. And I see our steadfast trooper trustee Dr. Milton Richards is present. I can see his smiling face. I don't see anybody else. They're AWOL.
So we'll just do a coup and do everything we want to do without them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
I object.
Okay, well, there's, there's, there's Leslie. Glad to see you, Leslie. I know you're having technical difficulties earlier, so it's nice to see you back.
Thank you.
There's, there's Graciela. Keep us on track. There's trustee Antonio Aguilar. Okay, we're following line here. Anybody else? I'm looking. See who we have here.
We have a corn.
Okay, all right, I'm just checking to make sure. Why is it getting trouble? All right. Let's call the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting in the Yosemite Community Colleges Board of Trustees. Is hereby called the order at five thirty-one PM or seventeen thirty-one hours. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant, or pursuant to AB three sixty-one and YCCD Resolution number two one dash two-two point one eight. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. And there are many people at the district that make this happen, and we want to thank them uh for everything they do behind the scenes to allow us to continue to do what we're doing for a long time now. It's very helpful to us and to the public and to our internal community. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board members, student trustee and chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and members of the public reviewing the meeting via uh live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for thirty days in accordance to board policy two-three-six-five recording. As a reminder, board members are asked to quote raise their hand and quote we assume when they wish to speak. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The public agenda request of the public comments we submit in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. Persons seeking to make any in real time public comment, we do so at time of the agenda. Item and are asked to use the quote raised and end quote Zoom feature. I ask trustees to mute themselves at this time, and I call upon our most honored trustee Leslie Beggs to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Leslie. Um, okay, got everybody back. We'll now move on to four point three roll call and establishment of forum. I would now ask the board stenographer to put the roll call for attendance.
Thank you. So trust, in addition to confirming that you are present, I'll ask that trustees also respond to the three questions listed in the agenda. Can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Student trustee Arshia Amir Salamani.
Present and yes to all three.
Thank you. Trustee Antonio Aguilar.
Present and yes to all three.
Vice Chair Leslie Beg.
Yes, to all three.
Trustee Margie Balkan was present earlier but is wasn't able to stay for the open session. Trustee Nancy Hinton.
Present, yes to all three.
Trustee Jenny Nicolau.
Present, yes to all three.
Trustee and Dr. Milton Richards.
Here and yes to all three.
And board chair Darren Garrett.
Present and yes to all three.
Forum has been established.
Thank you, board stenographer. We'll move on now to item four point four, report out from closed session. I'm happy to announce there are no reportable actions to report out on. Four point five changes in order of business. The board deserves the right to modify the order of business in a manner that seems appropriate by consent of board. At this time, I ask trustees if there is interest in changing the order of business. Going once, going twice. Okay, you lost your opportunity. All right, we'll move on now to item four point six, approval of the minutes of the March second, two thousand and twenty-two board of trustees study session. I'll uh give you a moment and then entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve those minutes made by trustee Jenny Nicolau. Is there a second?
Second, trustee Aguilar.
Trustee Aguilar, second in. Thank you, trustee Aguilar. We have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
Trustee, our vice chair Beg.
I'm gonna abstain because I haven't seen them yet. Did you just email them?
Uh, they were, they were emailed today, yeah.
Yeah, I have not seen them, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, trustee Hinton. If you could unmute yourself, please.
When I last checked, I had not seen him, so I am also going to abstain.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
The vote is four in favor, zero opposed to abstention, and uh trustee Balkan not present. Motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on now to item four point seven, approval of the minutes of the March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is regular meeting again. Give you a moment and then entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Uh, motion's been made to approve by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second?
A second to motion.
All right, we're on a roll here. Jenny Nicolau, trustee Jenny Nicolau made the, the second roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
Trust, vice chair Beg.
Nope, same reason.
Okay, thank you. Um, trustee Hinton.
Um. Same reason, I haven't received it yet.
Abstain. So I take both of those are abstentions uh because for uh trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
Again, the vote is four in favor, zero opposed to abstention when not present. Motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on now to item four point eight, public comments. This time I ask the board stenographer to first read aloud any public comments, receive the email, then introduce in real time public comment requests. Please note all email correspondence related to this meeting will become part of the board minutes. Board stenographer.
Chair Garrett, there were no public comments received via email, and I will just look in the participant to see if there's any raised hands to provide a comment. Raise hands up here.
Okay, excitement is building. Uh, we'll move on now to item five point one, board finance committee report. So the board finance committee met on April the fourth. Uh, present were my fellow uh colleagues, trustee Dr. Milton Richards and trustee Antonio Aguilar. And we went over the, the proposed uh two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three uh budget with the vice chancellor Trevor Stewart leading us in that, in that discussion. Um. It was, it was just a basic overview of, of what the, the budget is looking like right now. Obviously, we don't have the May revise from the governor. Um, and everyone uh up and down the state and the community college community is waiting to see if the governor is including um the continuance of the emergency conditions funding, uh which obviously would, would uh help out college districts like Yosemite Community College District. Uh, so far, we haven't seen that. There's other items in there and, and uh pension cost offset and, and other things. And that was pretty much uh, uh it. Uh, does vice chancellor Stewart want to add any additional comments?
Not at this time, Chair Garrett.
Okay, any of my fellow trustees? You're good. I'm gonna give a shout out to Dr. Sarah Schrader to see if she has any comments or concerns about how she sees the proposed budget so far being laid out.
Oh, yeah, she is not in the room, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Is she? Oh, pardon me.
I see her there.
She is.
There we go.
My apologies. I was trying to get my screen up and it wasn't coming up. Um, I think in terms of the kind of budget, I really do hope that, as you said, we're wait, waiting for May revise. Um, MJC, MJC is currently uh struggling in terms of getting class sizes back up. So that is hurting our operational budget so, and having to have uh more funds towards part-time overload. But I'm uh again keeping my fingers crossed for May revise that we'll be able to get more ongoing funding towards the college.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your input, sir. Always appreciate it. Okay, that's all I have to, to report on that. We'll move on now to board policy committee report and, and chairperson Nancy Hinton, please.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. Um, we met on Monday. And we had um passed through on our second readings. And we also went over some first readings that I'm sure Kimberly will go through um later this evening. But one of our concerns is policy sixty-three oh five with the reserves. Um, there was some concern of either holding it for a third reading. Um. Taking it back through the beginning or um doing a study session and then seeing if that um meets the needs of those that are concerned. The main concern is, of course, I mean, it's the reserve, so there's a lot of interest. And it was um the procedures part of the um policy was new. And so I'm not sure if this is the time or later in the meeting that we would like um Trevor to go over. Chair, what is your wish?
I, I think out of respect for, for uh not only your committee's work and, and everybody else will wait until uh that item comes up on the agenda. Is that okay with you, Nancy?
Sure.
Okay, so that's.
Then I'll hold, I'll hold off um making a motion at that time then.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hinton. Okay, any questions for trustee Hinton? Okay, uh, we'll move on now to item six point one. Uh, presentation repopulating and uh enrollment plan updates Columbia College and Madison Junior College and EOC update. So our, our usual cast of characters here. So um Amy, I see, oh, there's Lorraine. So whichever one of you wants to go first.
I'll introduce us. Thank you and good evening, Chair Garrett and trustees and chancellor and everyone in attendance. Thank you again for inviting Amy Rivera and me to present for this meeting, bringing you the most recent COVID statuses of both our district counties, Stanislas and Tulane. Um, we'll also touch on some key recommendations from our local and state public health agencies, those that remain in place and those that have changed. So with that, um Amy will begin with Stanislaw County, and that will be our next slide. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so Stanislaw County Public Health met on April sixth, so that's the last update that I have. Um, our county is not collecting case rate data due to the large volume of at-home tests that don't end up getting reported. Um, and they're also referring the public to uh California Department of Public Health for all data, um which is presented here. So the current CDPH data shows that hospitalizations and cases in the county continue to fall, as you can see. Uh, the black line is the county, the gray line is the state. And these graphs cover a span of six months. Uh, for the case rates, the data is incomplete after April the fourth. So April fourth data that I have is that total confirmed uh cases was at twenty-six or two point seven per one hundred thousand. And you can just see here that it uh fell pretty sharply there in the middle and continued on its decline. Uh, hospitalizations on the top right, uh the data is a bit more current from April tenth. And on April tenth, there were sixteen COVID nineteen hospitals, uh patients, seven fewer from the prior day, which is a thirty point four percent decrease. Uh, the death rate on the bottom uh is incomplete after the twenty-first of March. So on twenty, on the twenty-first of March, the death rate was point one per one hundred thousand. And you can see there another um pretty nice decline up to this point. Um, another report from Stanislaw County was that UC Merced is conducting wastewater surveillance and providing data to Stanislaw County. And wastewater surveillance, as we probably mentioned briefly in another meeting, um it's an important tool to understand current variant activity and to track any emerging variants. Um, so we learned that the BA two subvariant that you may be hearing a lot about, particularly in what's happening in the northeast. Um, it is in Stanislaw County. It was identified back in February, and so far it's not leading to any surges or increases in hospitalizations in our region. Next slide for Tulane County.
So Tulane County currently posts uh their COVID report Friday. This COVID report that you see this dashboard that is all familiar was from last Friday, uh April eighth. As with all of California, we remain in the low uh Center for Disease Control category for COVID activity. So of uh as a um comparison, last Friday, we had nine cases. Uh, so this week is a tiny uptick to fifteen. We had sixteen active cases. We have thirteen this week. Zero hospitalizations, and we've had zero hospitalizations for COVID for more than two weeks now. The fourteen day average last week was two point five. It's a tiny bit up, but our positivity rate is down. Last week is, was one point seven. So these numbers are all very low uh compared to the surge that we saw in January and February. So um the numbers are flattening out and definitely uh on the decline. Um, our death rate hasn't changed in a couple of weeks, and the additions in the past were from several months prior. Uh, Tulane County does not test for wastewater for COVID. Um, and I wasn't able to see, find out what our BA two uh rates were or just uh if it was present. Um, so I, I don't have the answer to that, but I can find it if it's something that you'd like. Tulane County Public Health and our Tulane County Public Health Officer continues to follow the guidelines for the California Department of Public Health for masking and contact tracing guidance, and Amy will review those guides on the next slide. I did want to offer a little information on um testing at Columbia College. We do offer varied testing for all of our staff and students. The Student Health Services continues to offer two state-sponsored programs. The primary antigen testing program, which gives results in fifteen minutes and gives a digital result to display as a student needs. The colors PCR testing, which comes back in two to four days. That also gives a digital result. And we still also have the BD Veritor home tests available to all our students and staff. And it also provides a digital result as needed when it's connected to the app. We have had a significant drop in the Columbia community members seeking testing services in this last month. Those coming to the office are sparse and generally are here because they are experiencing COVID-like symptoms or are fulfilling a program requirement such as the students in the Emergency Medical Technician Program or the um Certified Nursing Assistant Program. We've had no uh office positive tests for students um captured on the dashboard, the BD dashboard in the last four weeks, although it is noteworthy to mention that many home tests are being done that won't be reported on any platform that we follow. But again, looking at the dashboard, our numbers are low. So I will turn it over to Amy to update the recommendations. Thank you.
So we have links under each section here if you want more information or more detail. Um, but for CDPH, they updated their close contact guidance for the general public. And probably the biggest update is that quarantine is not advised for asymptomatic individuals who have been in close contact, and that's regardless of immunization status. Uh, the definition of close contact has also been updated. And um what it means now is uh someone sharing the same indoor airspace like in a home or a clinic waiting room, an airplane, for example, for a cumulative total time of fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour period. So the, the timing is the same, but the distance, that six-foot distance language is no longer in this definition. Um, it's still advised to test after exposure and to mask up to day ten following contact. And certain high-risk environments are still following the older stricter guidance. Um, for masking, uh, there's a link here to the February twenty-eight guidance, and that guidance has not changed. So CDPH still has a strong recommendation to mask indoors for all. Well, mask, I'm sorry, with masking being required in certain higher risk settings like healthcare settings, prisons and shelters. Uh, masking is also advised for those with shortened isolations, those who were in close contact, as I mentioned, and those with symptoms who may be around others. Um, this is taken directly from the CDPH document uh that states masking will continue to be an important layer of protection along with the continued recommendations around vaccinations, testing and ventilation to keep schools a safe environment even as case rates and hospitalizations decline. Um, as Lorraine mentioned, going down to CDC, uh Tulane County is uh in the low community level, and so is uh Stanislaw County. Um, for vaccines, just a quick update if you haven't uh read about the second booster. Um, adults fifty and up can choose to receive a second booster at least four months after their first booster. And vaccines are currently still being offered at MJC every two weeks, um with some dates also going into the summer, so in June. And for Tulane County, uh Lorraine shared that um she is referring students and those interested in vaccine to community providers who are still offering those. Well, that completes our presentation. Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Thank you both. Again, as always, any questions for either Amy or Lorraine? Okay, again, thank you both, and we'll move on now to uh the college presidents. Let's go first with um Columbia College President Lena Tran.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Trustee Garrett. Good evening, board trustees, uh community members and colleague. It's a pleasure to be here with you on my first in-person uh meeting. I like to share our progress of reopening. Currently, we're looking at about fifty percent in-class offering of courses, about thirty percent online and twenty percent a combination of corresponding and our correctional facility inmates population. And in line with having to reopening, we are really going to push forward for our summer program campaigning. So I left a few flyer postcard with Gracilla to hand out to the board trustees. We're looking at the idea of the workplace balance for the summer because coming out the COVID, we understand folks are stressed and they might not have the idea that I want education, but we want to push that. So our campaign is about stay ahead, catch up to explore, and we have some classes that is all free for the summer, so we're pushing that, and we will be promoting throughout the counties with tons of posters, like two hundred posters and postcards everywhere. So if you see one, please pick it up and relate to other people. The other good news we have is that our college is now able to certify and issue I twenty, meaning that we're able to service and recruit international students. This is a great opportunity for Columbia College to really start rebuilding our enrollment and bringing the student into our community. And my final, um, the third, uh, the third um And my final, the third, the third update in terms of reopening is that. The college is really excited. We are looking to bring more people on campus to explore so that we have different events. Commencement as well as activities, and we believe by opening up the campus and having everybody back. And the community getting involved is a great way for Columbia to start moving along and get our reopening and enrollment back on track. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, President Tran. Any questions for the President of Columbia College? Looking around here, excuse me. Sorry about that. We'll move on now to the President of Modesto Junior College, President Bobbiayi.
Good evening, trustees.
I'm sorry, did Leslie have your hand? Did you have your hand up, Leslie? I'm sorry.
If you would kindly unmute yourself. I just wanted to welcome our new president. This is the first time I think we've been in a meeting together and you've been visible. And so I just wanted to say hello and say how glad we are that you're with us.
Thank you, Leslie. Hey, Santanu, you have the floor or the screen.
Good evening. So party of the century is going to happen in sixteen days from now. Mark your calendar. Twenty-ninth of this month, we are having the Centennial Graduation Celebration. This, we already have about six hundred and twenty-seven students who would be walking across the stage. Our high water mark was seven hundred and fifty. So that would entail probably about five thousand plus people in our stadium. And we would do it in a way that it is befitting of our centennial celebrations. So if you have not, please mark your calendar and come join us. Semester is coming to an end, as you all know. Summer enrollment has begun, and summer, we are a little bit behind at this point of time what we were last year. We are slowly bridging the gap. We're about thirty FTEs below what we were at the same point of time last year. So hopefully, we should be able to make it up. And if we cannot get to that point when we begin summer on the second of May. We do have an opportunity of introducing some of the late start classes, because summer typically goes in five weeks chunks. So we can reintroduce, we can later introduce some classes to make up for any of the deficit. But having said that, we have to keep in mind that we are trying to do a catch up with last year. We are not trying to do a catch up with the year before where we had significantly higher number of FTEs. But anyway, that's the decline all around the state. We are looking forward to the summer semester when we are going to be on campus full time. Many of us have been on campus anyway, but this would be, everybody would be coming in. This last two weeks of the semester is always a number of celebrations happening, whether it's a commencement of different divisions. Or some thanks, thank you lunches and dinners and so on and so forth. So yeah, it's it's an exciting, interesting time, and it's good to see people joining and enjoying each other's company. And the kind of the way we used to do in the good old days on a face-to-face version. Last Friday, we had another lunch on our Ag Pavilion, our first big event in a long time. And that was again, nice to see people coming back to the campus. So that's about it. Other than that, I think our goal is now to land the plane towards the end of the semester. So we end the semester successfully and onwards onto summer.
Chair, thanks, or I'm sorry, Chair Garrett, if you would kindly unmute.
Sorry about that. Santanu, thank you. No questions. You got off easy. All right. I didn't know. I got it now. Okay, there we go. Yes. All right, we'll move on now to six. Oh, sorry, we have Trevor Stewart. I'm getting ahead of myself.
I'll make my update real quick. The EOC, we're essentially starting to wind down our operations. We're now meeting twice a month instead of weekly. We are paying attention to what's going on in both primary counties. And are looking forward to hopefully one of these days getting back to business as usual. So nothing to report from the EOC at this time.
All right, Chancellor Young.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. I want to thank the health professionals, the college president and the vice chancellor. For presenting the updates month after month. We are coming to the close of the semester. And for the summer that is coming up, these presentations will be in the hiatus. And then we will restart the presentations just before we begin the fall semester. So that by that time, we will continue to receive the latest updates from both counties. That concludes my announcement. Thank you, Chair Garrett.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Any questions for anyone with the reopening of the of the institutions? Okay, going, going, gone. We'll move on now to item six point two association reports. And we'll start at the top with Student Senate Activity Reports, Associated Students of Modesto Junior College, ASMJC President Maria Marquez.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I'm very happy to see you all here today. So I'll go right in with my report for ASMJC. ASMJC attended the SSC general assembly. Where we learned all the new implementations and processes that oversees our senate meetings. Along with that, we had the opportunity to meet new people and connect talks with them about our student population. Also, last week, ASMJC distributed caps and gowns to six hundred and seventy-two students. For their centennial commencement ceremony this April twenty-ninth. All ASMJC members are very excited for the this event since it's the biggest one that we have held in on campus since the pandemic. As well, as we all know, this is maybe my last report for the Board of Trustees. As the ASMJC president. So for this segment, I would like to thank every single person that allowed me. To give me the opportunity to work with you guys. It's a blessing to be in this position. I've grown a lot since the beginning, so I want to thank you all again and until next time. So this concludes my report. I hope everybody had a great day. Please be safe and please let me know if there is any questions.
Maria, thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for the President of ASMJC? Well, Maria, we, I, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for not only your commitment to your fellow students. But but your commitment to the institution, the district as a whole. And I, I think I speak for everybody that we wish you well on what whatever your future has in store for it. And and we wish you all the best in your in your future educational endeavors. So thank you again very much and have a great summer. We'll move on now to Associated Students of Columbia College, ASCC President Ricky Lee Corba.
All right. Good evening, Board. I hope all of you have been well. Since I last reported to you all, the Senate has been very busy. Our constitution and codes are almost complete, as well as the creation of a canvas shell. For new senators and officers to get on boarded with our process policies and procedures, as well as get started on. The reoccurring events that we have throughout the school year. Our ponderosa pantry is still very successful, and we are serving about fifty to a hundred families every month. We've been holding our Warm Up Wednesday where students can get free soup from our very own culinary department, as well as getting the recipes for said soup. Students are just loving this. For one, they get free soup and two, being able to stay warm, especially now that the weather is getting cooler. The ASCC, we've had meetings with the executive, with executive leaders from the Academic Senate. As well as our new president, Dr. Tran, to share ideas and collaborate with. Just making the campus a better place and more welcoming and enjoyable for students. We attended the Student Senate for California Community Colleges General Assembly, just like ASMJC. Where we attended workshops and voted in the general election for resolutions, as well as leadership positions for the SSC. We have two events coming up on April twenty-first and twenty-second. Donut Stress, an event where students can get free coffee and donuts, as well as extra tutoring to make sure students are not stressed and prepped for finals. Grad Fair is the next day where students can pick up their graduation regalia and listen to a student band. Our Academic Achievement Center will be offering extra tutoring that week before finals. And our Wellness and Health Center is offering tours of their facility and giving out your best self for finals. Which are bags filled with goodies like snacks, essential oils and information cards. The ASCC has had a very intense, and we will have a very intense and exciting few final weeks of this school year. And we are very excited to see it through. As some of you may know, this is my last board meeting as the ASCC president, and I will be graduating this semester and transferring on. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for all that you do and allowing students like me to speak at your meetings, and I hope you have a relaxing, fun summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Any questions for the Associated Student President of Columbia College? Well, Ricky, just like Maria, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for your commitment, not only to your fellow students, but to the institution in Columbia College. And it's meant a lot to all of us, the work that you do, just like Maria. It's very important. What you, what you folks do and the value that you add to the to the student experience. And I wish you well in in your future educational endeavors and your future result. Wish you all the best. Thank you. We'll move on now to Leadership Team Advisory Council, LTAC. And who's going to be giving that report tonight? Ah, okay.
Hello, everyone. Greetings. LTAC says hello to you. It is an honor to talk about the logistics of of the hundred year celebration that Modesto Junior College is preparing for. Deans, facilities, executive leadership, district office. We want to let you know that LTAC appreciates all your efforts and we are looking forward to the celebration. Also, we are excited about high flex classrooms that are being onboarded on MJC campuses. It's exciting to see all this great technology work on behalf of offering different modalities that will be available for students. So we're just happy to see things move forward when it comes to high flex classrooms. Also, we're excited about having graduation outside. That has already been mentioned, but it's just exciting to get together. And celebrate the one hundred years of offering wonderful educational services to our community. Goodwill ambassadors from their respective campuses, both Columbia and MJC. Will be sharing out to the campus community about the wonderful acknowledgements of maybe a celebration. And so that's going to be going out starting in April and will continue on a monthly basis. And then finally, LTAC wants to thank you, Board, for supporting the increased costs and benefits. We know that costs continue to be on the rise, and we just thank you for grabbing hold to this call so that it's not reflective to individual members. This concludes my report. You guys have a good one.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Any questions for the LTAC representative? Again, thank you very much for your report. We'll move on now to Yosemite Faculty Association, YFA. Representative Brian Green on behalf of YFA President Dimitri Carriota.
Good evening, Chancellor Young, Chair Garrett and Trustees. As you said, I'm Brian Green, Columbia College Librarian and the YFA Vice President for Columbia College. There are a handful of items that I would like to report on. First, YFA is proud of all the faculty earning tenure later this month. And the commitment that they've demonstrated to the students at both colleges. We look forward to working with our newly tenured colleagues for many years to come. Next, YFA continues to have concerns regarding Board Policy sixty-three oh five, the Board Reserves. We appreciate Trustee Hinton's earlier remarks in support postponing a second reading of that policy. Especially as it will allow time for constituent groups to thoughtfully consider the new administrative procedure. On another note, YFA is very encouraged by the progress made at the negotiations table. And we're hopeful that we can reach an agreement before the semester ends. We're confident that the model that the teams developed will maintain an attractive benefits package for faculty while helping to ensure the long-term fiscal stability of the district. This has been a lengthy process, and we appreciate the tremendous effort put in by both teams. After a TA has signed, a ratification vote by YFA membership would likely occur in the early fall. Next, regarding repopulating the colleges, YFA looks forward to faculty returning to our campuses in earnest this fall. And we recognize the improvements made to air filtration and other mitigation efforts that have been implemented. And we're a ready partner to address any concerns that arise as the colleges prepare for the fall semester. Finally, we would like to acknowledge our colleague and past YFA President Debbie Bolter. Her upcoming field work in South Africa is on tonight's agenda. And is a shining example of YCCD faculty contributing at the highest levels of their disciplines. Thank you for continuing to support the professional activities of Dr. Bolter and all YCCD faculty. This concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Any, any comments or questions for for Brian Green? All right, Brian, thank you again. We'll, we'll move on now to. Item four on the agenda for Associated for California School Employees Association, President Amy Lovett. Hi, Amy.
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Fellow Trustees and Chancellor Young. As spring semester is coming to an end, classified professionals have been extremely busy assisting faculty and students getting ready for finals and preparing for graduation ceremonies. We are very excited to see another cohort graduate from our institution. We must get ready to start our summer four-ten schedule and are also excited for the return of three-day weekends. With the upcoming long days on campus, there are mixed feelings and uncertainties with regards to going back to normal operation. Ending the hybrid work option that has been granted through the Chancellor's Cabinet through April thirtieth. We are looking for further clarification and setting clearer guideline and protocols for what their requirements are. As all staff are required to return back into the office, like masking or even what would be the option if there is a continuation and a breakout of COVID. On behalf of classified professionals, I would like to thank and send our appreciation appreciation to Vice Chancellor Trevor Stewart for giving his time and willingness to answer questions. On the current budget update and further explanation of the district reserves at a fiscal town hall. Many are anticipating some form of financial difficulties as inflation continues to rise well above eight percent as of the March CPI report. If we, as employees of an institution of higher education, are experiencing concerns of financial hardship during a COVID climate, how is that impacting our students? With the reserves being as healthy as they've ever been, we are willing to. We are wanting to be included in a discussion and contributing ideas of programs and services that we can offer to the YCCD community. As one-time initiatives and our continued support to help those impacted so they can thrive at this institution and in life. Next month, we are looking forward to Classified School Employees Week, also known as CSU. The CCA leadership team is looking forward to planning a special appreciation for the hard work and dedication of the over four hundred and forty classified professionals at YCCD. Day in and day out, we are here to serve the students in all facets of their educational endeavors. And many times acting as a mentor and support in their daily lives. Classified professionals are usually the first point of contact for a student and the first smiling face. Or currently smiling eyes that they encounter. First impressions are crucial as they help set the tone for the student's educational journey. I applaud the dedication and commitment that my fellow classified bring to our students, our institution and the community with which we live. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSC Chapter four twenty.
Thank you, Amy. Any, any questions for President Amy Lovett? Again, Amy, thank you very much for your presentation. We'll move on now to item five, Faculty Representative for the Board, Alan McKissick.
Thank you for this opportunity to to address you. And I would like to begin tonight with a little boasting on behalf of Modesto Junior College. Its Department of Communication Studies, and in particular, the Forensic Speech Competition Team. That team is now its one-hundredth year. We have the oldest California Community College forensics team. That team is now in its one-hundredth year. We have the oldest California Community College forensics team. In the beginning, our debate squad competed in match debates against university teams like UC Berkeley. By the way, our team won that match debate with UC Berkeley. Since then, our team has brought much state and national level recognition to Modesto Junior College. This year, your team won the California Community College State Championship. Also, it brought home the most prestigious Community College National Recognition, the Sylvia D. Mariner Cumulative Sweepstakes Award from the National Cup Tournament in St. Louis. If it pleases the Board, in the fall, professors and coaches Ryan Guy and Tori Schimpf would like to present to the Board on a program that has served so many students for so many years so well and reflected so well on our district. Since I last spoke to you, I attended the Board Policy Committee meeting where once again, participation by any attendees uh in a, of that open meeting was encouraged. I am always impressed by the careful and thorough deliberation of that committee, which is such a critical stop in our policy review process established by our Board. Their latest meeting included a reading of proposed revision of Board Policy sixty-three oh five reserves. As you know, there's been a spirited discussion of that policy in the District Policy and Procedure Committee, as distinct from the Board Policy Committee, and in the District Council. Those venues provide discussion of policies and procedures. But in the most recent review, there was no Policy sixty-three oh five administrative procedure to discuss. During the March meeting of the Board, several trustees spoke to the need for a procedure to discuss. That need is quite clear. The use of the reserve would be a very serious matter and we need to know what would trigger the use of the reserve and the decision-making process before that recommendation is made to the Board. Earlier this evening, Committee Chair Hinton referenced a new draft procedure introduced at Monday's Board Policy Meeting. The draft procedure has not yet been discussed in our well-established and well-run policy review process, a process that has served us so well. Absence some especially urgent need, the draft procedure should go through that process. Like all of our other policies and procedures, even more so for one this important. Discussion of the size of our reserve is a critical matter that has been under discussion for a while now. Related but separate is another critical matter, our procedure for the use of that reserve, should it ever come to that. I urge the Board to insist that the new draft procedure be put through the process that our Board established and expects to be used. Thank you again for this opportunity to, to address you.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Alan McKissick? Again, Alan, thank you for your, for your report and presentation.
Um Darren, could I just say that I look forward to the um presentation that, I hope we do get that presentation that you're talking about in the fall, about, about our um s- forensics teams. That would be wonderful.
Yes, it would be. It'd be, would be nice if we had a, a uh Pirate's Log uh back at MJC where we could share that with the entire uh MJC community. Maybe, maybe if someone is listening and, and we can uh bring the Pirate's Log back at some point for the benefit of our community and our students. Um moving on now to item uh six under Association Report Academic Senate Activity Reports, Modesto Junior College Academic Senate. MJC Academic Senate Representative Giselle Flores on behalf of MJC Academic Senate President Aisha Soaw.
Thank you, Chair Garrett, Trustees and Chancellor Young. Thank you for your time this evening. Uh we are nearing the end of the spring semester and MJC Senate has been incredibly busy. April twenty-first is the last Senate meeting of the semester and we are trying to wrap up all of the loose ends before most faculty leave for the summer. We have multiple committee charges and membership lists up for their second reads. Uh and this is actually one of the first steps in the process of reviewing the new governance model that has now been in place for almost a full academic year. Also up for second reads are a document on the guiding principles of the Faculty Handbook Work Group and the study and analysis for the transition from divisions to schools. A lot of the work being done in transition from, in the Senate depends on that transition from divisions to schools. And until that transition is finalized, it isn't possible to complete our governance review, faculty handbook revision, Senate handbook, rules and bylaws review and so on. So this spring has been spent finalizing the processes of this important transition and fall will bring a lot of the work that implements these changes. It's an exciting time and one that we hope will impact our students and the institution positively. The hiring prioritization process is up for a final read at our upcoming Senate meeting and we look forward to robust discussion and faculty involvement. We will also be reviewing the budget process outlined in the Administrative Procedure Section of Board Policy six-three oh five. Budget processes are a mutually agree-upon area of the ten-plus-one where there is a strong precedent of faculty input. So I have to agree with my colleagues who have spoken before me and I hope the discussion on this item will continue at the next board meeting so that we can represent the faculty consensus accurately. Um in addition, the DFAC documents that call for the resource allocation model to be finalized from its draft form will also be up for a second read. There seemed to be a general consensus during the first read that, that senators wouldn't feel comfortable making the process permanent until the review and reflection outlined in the draft was completed so that it can be determined whether or not it was effective before finalizing it. Lastly, I'd like to note that the plenary uh for the Academic Senate of California Community Colleges took place last week. Myself and Aisha attended as representatives of MJC and Aisha acted as the college delegate. It was exciting to see so many resolutions addressing important topics such as DEI work, academic freedom and requests for funding for mental health supports and professional development. We look forward to taking the resolutions that passed back to our local senate to see how they might be applied locally in a way that serves our students, community and the mission of the college best. Many of the resolutions require working cooperatively with our local administration and the Board of Trustees. We believe this type of unifying work has the ability to be particularly impactful and we are ready to do our, our part. I know I said lastly, but I really just want to congratulate Maria Marquez for her graduation. Um she has been such an incredible voice in so many work groups on campus. When I'm in meetings, I always see Maria's face and she has so much incredible contributions. I really wanted to end my report with thanking her for her contribution uh during her time as ASMJC president. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Giselle, and, and thank you for, for uh taking the extra moment to recognize our, our uh students. That's, that's great. That's what we like to see. So thank you again for your report. We'll move on now to uh Columbia College Academic Senate President Lana Von Epp. Lana?
Hello, everybody and happy spring. Even though up here in the foothills, uh we've experienced some frost. I don't know if anybody else gardens, but I have just the absolute horror of seeing some of my little baby seedlings that were doing so well in the warm weather die in the frost. I'm devastated, but um I will press on and I'm glad to give my report to you tonight. I'm, I'm excited to tell you, we've got some great celebrations coming up for our end of the year. We've got our scholarship awards tomorrow. So that's the fourteenth from four to five-thirty in our Dogwood Forum. There will be performances and speeches and this is such a wonderful event. If you are available to come to our scholarship awards, please do come. We'd love to host you. Uh we are having our college picnic to honor our Teacher of the Year, Faculty of the Year, our Part-Time Faculty of the Year, as well as honor our retirees and wish them well in their next stage. And that is on uh the same day as our graduation. And I am so honored to have some of our board members present as dictators during this event. So if I don't see you in person before then, I'll see you then. Um recently, this last Saturday, we had another celebratory event, which was our Native Voices and it was held at Columbia College and to honor indigenous voices. The Union Democrat ran an article and I really liked the, the quote, "Indigenous hip-hop is a means to reclaim history and to remember the resilience of our people through art, dance, storytelling and lyricism." And I would like to especially thank Stephanie Beaver Guzman, who was one of the um event designers um for bringing this to our campus and I really hope it happens again next year. I hear it's just an especially excellent event. Other things going on on campus, as always, the continuous cycle of improvement, both program review and our accreditation are rolling forward. Our accreditation tri-chairs, I'm so glad to report, are incredibly well organized. All the standards teams have met and we're in the process of drafting language. Um we're going to complete our first step ahead of schedule and our academic senate is going to have, making sure that we have regular updates on the process. We're keeping things short and sweet. We are highlighting the things we're doing well and having open and honest, honest conversations about the areas we can still improve. Similar for our program review, uh keeping it streamlined, simple, also documenting how each resource request relates to a specific departmental goal, really making sure that is linked up and very thoughtful in our planning. Um we're aiming to have all our program reviews done by the semester end. Also, last Saturday, the Academic Senate of California Community Colleges, we had our bi-annual uh plenary. I was the voting delegate for Columbia College. There's over forty resolutions and then to discuss, debated, finally voted on. Um a lot of them were related to AB seven oh five and AB um one seven oh five, which are the math and English below transfer issues um and how to best support students from our entire community. We've got other resolutions about keeping textbooks at low or no cost. Uh others were directed at increasing awareness to our inclusion, equity, diversity, anti-racist practices. And just so you know, the YCCD hiring procedures have been going through some pretty impressive edits over this last year and we're finally ready to present and do our second reading to update that language to ensure that diversity, equity, inclusion um are part of our process at our district. Um I also want to tell you that two of the resolutions were related to supporting rising scholars, which is the name used for formerly or currently incarcerated students. And at Columbia's graduation, um at the end of this month, one of the students chosen, one of the two students chosen to speak is a farm, formerly incarcerated student. His name is Lance Swan. Um and he has gone from a lifer to a thriving and blossoming scholar and I can't wait to hear him speak. Onto a board-related um item. I am needing a, a really clear definition between a board study session and a special meeting. Um is my understanding that s- study sessions have no action items and special meetings could have action items. So I just, I, I'm hoping to track that a little bit more clearly um with your assistance. And um you've already heard a little bit from my colleagues and Trustee Hinton brought it up also, the reserves policy, especially the procedure part, um sixty-three oh five. And just to tack on Columbia College Academic Senate request that you kick this procedure, the procedure part, back to the Policy and Procedure Committee so that it can be placed on the agenda uh for constituent review and voting. Um I did notice that on the document that's appended to our board documents, there's at least a typo. So uh we can help you find some of those things and clarify some language, but that does need to go through the regular standard um our default process. And uh Columbia College has had our last full Academic Senate meeting for the spring semester. At our last meeting, we did discuss the resource allocation model um with for DFAC. We do want for it to be fully assessed, that pilot program, before we go for full adoption. And so we look forward to seeing the results of that assessment when we reconvene in August. And I would like to end with a huge shout out and thank you to our students, Columbia College students, Ricky and our Shia. I am so, so proud to um be at this college with you. You have represented our students so thoughtfully. And um we at Columbia are so incredibly proud of you and as you move on, please keep in touch. And thank you, Board members. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Okay, Lana, thank, thank you very much. Any, any questions for Lana Von Epp, the Academic Senate President at Columbia College? Okay, Lana, thank you again. We'll, we'll move on now to item six-point-three, Presentation of the, uh Yosemite Community College District Chancellor, Chancellor Young.
Okay, go ahead.
There we go. Uh I'm very pleased to announce uh the California Community College Classified Employee of the Year uh has been selected. And the nominee selected is Casey Fokerson, Senior Administrative Secretary at Columbia College. There were many nominees up and down the state and we look forward to Casey uh joining her colleagues statewide for the statewide nomination. I just want all of us to know that the criteria used is, let me read, a commitment to the vision for success and equitable student outcomes, professional ethics and standards. So Casey has been evaluated by her peers and nominated and uh the Board has selected Casey Fokerson. And on the screen, we have a picture of Dr. Trent, President of Columbia College, presenting her the award that you see uh on the right. Thank you. Next item is the uh District Director of Public Safety. It gives me great pleasure to be able to introduce uh Roland Gallardo, the new District Director of Public Safety for Community College, for Yosemite Community College District. He comes to us from the University of Southern California, where he has served as a lieutenant for a number of years and oversees a large segment of the university's operation for its safety. So uh Roland Gallardo, I think he's uh uh in the audience.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, uh can you put on your video and say hi to the Board of Trustees, please?
Okay, how you doing? Uh hello, um I'd like to say a couple of words if it's okay. Yeah, I want to thank the trustees, Chancellor Young and the presidents and others here today. Um thank you for giving me this great opportunity. I'm looking forward. I'm excited about this uh position to lead uh in the position that I'm in. I have high expectations of myself uh and my staff and the officers, of course. So you said, uh the Yosemite Community College District has three colleges and I'm going to be active and engaged in all three of them. That's so important. And also, I'm looking forward to working with the community stakeholders and partners and develop new uh partnerships. Um I am a product of the California uh Junior College System. I attended three uh junior colleges uh in Southern California. And what's important to me also is, is getting to meet the student groups, the students, career events uh uh are so important. Mentoring the young uh students uh is important with the community. And also um this graduation that's occurring, I'm looking forward to, to uh being involved with that. And every event that happens here with the Yosemite uh uh College District, I'm going to be engaged with. So thank you very much, I, I, giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh it is, uh you know, we are approaching the end of the academic year. I know at both colleges, uh preparations have been ongoing for a while now for commencement. And I want to thank the faculty and support staff and uh uh leadership uh group for uh planning for this great event to end our academic year. And of course, for our graduates, you know, this would be not the end of the journey, but certainly it will be the end of their chapter here and it marks a commencement of another chapter for them uh wherever they are transferring to. So again, thank you. So again, thank you for the great work, and we look forward to a great commencement. Thank you, Chair Garrett. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Any questions for our chancellor? Okay, we'll move on now to section seven, action items consent. So does anyone first want to pull any item? Trustees want to pull any item from, from the consent calendar? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. So our boards stenographer, Graciela Molina, please.
Chair Garrett and board members, please be advised that the out of country staff travel request for Deborah Bolter, which is item seven point seven, is being pulled from the agenda as a travel occurs while she is on summer break. As of April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, she will have fulfilled her responsibility days for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two academic year. The faculty member is not scheduled to teach part-time this summer and no district or college division funds are being provided. The faculty member did receive a grant from MJC Foundation back in spring of twenty twenty to utilize for expenses related to the travel to Johannesburg, South Africa. But this is not an MJC Foundation authorized travel either. Travel plans in twenty twenty were canceled due to the pandemic. And the funds remained to be available. So for that reason, this item is being pulled off of the agenda. In addition, I have a correction to item seven point nine, consent agenda personnel. On page two of three, for reference of the public and on your agenda, page thirty-four of one twenty-two. A name on the short term appointed list should read Erica Mattingly, not Eric Mattingly. The third cell from the bottom. Wanted to make that correction.
Okay, thank you, boards stenographer for that. So.
So moved.
Okay, got it. Boy, we're on a roll here. Thank you. Okay, wow, trusty Jenny Nicolau. So we've got a first by trustee Dr. Milton Richards and a second by trustee Jenny Nicolau with those removed items and corrections eloquently stated by our board stenographer. Before we move on real quick, as we always do, we have a retirement on the personnel action items. And I'm going to ask, because I have received phone calls in the past that I have butchered people's names when announcing their retirements. And these are very important things to make note of, and I respect that. So Chancellor Young or Graciela, either one, can you assist me in, in announcing the correct pronunciation of the one individual on for retirement?
I wish I could. I wish I could, but I might butcher it myself. I know that Dean Daly is not here. She didn't give her report for leadership team. I would say Isabel. Lack of.
I'll, I'll just say, we want to recognize Isabel for her fourteen and a half years of service as a library specialist, library and student services at Columbia College. Yes.
We do have Brian Green that.
Oh, wonderful.
Help us with that.
Wonderful. Brian, please, because I want to, I want to respect this person.
Yes, I appreciate that. It's Isabel Lacazote, and she worked both at MJC and at the Columbia College Library. She's, has service at both colleges.
Beautiful name. And Brian, thank you so much for, for correcting us. So Isabel Lacazote, library specialist, who spent time both at Columbia College and MJC, fourteen and a half years of service to the district. We, we will, we, we wish her well and we thank her for her service and, and again, wish her well in her retirement. So with that, roll call vote, please.
Yes, trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Bag, or vice chair Baggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
The vote is six zero, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will move on now to action items under section eight. Eight point one, Modesto Junior College naming a baseball field. And under this item, we have the MJC College President or the MJC Foundation Executive Director, George Bertrukas. So who would like to go first?
Let me go first. Good evening, trustees. Thank you so much for taking up this agenda item. I am bringing to your attention and requesting you the naming of our baseball field in the name of Jerry Streeter. I have given you a written recommendation and according to our policy, we do have the namings of facilities available for those who have made significant contribution to the campus, to the campus community, to its students and to the overall our connection with the community as such. From those perspective, I don't think there is any other suitable name that comes to my mind than our ex-coach, late Mr. Jerry Streeter. He has contributed significantly to the campus and the communities. And we would hear from about his contribution later on from some of the other folks who are present out here. This is within our policy and also there would be, and once we have this, I am confident that in this centennial year, we can garner more support to even beautify this ball field in the memory of Jerry Streeter. So I am requesting your consideration favorably. And if there is any question, I'll be happy to answer. And Dr. Budrukas, if I've missed something or if there is a question for me, I'll be happy to answer, or Dr. Budrukas can also add a comment or two.
Thank you, Dr. Banda Badi. See, if we say it fast enough, it's, it, it, it goes really well. Those continue, thank, thank you for that. George Bertrukas. Are you with us this evening? I'm looking at multiple.
I am.
Okay.
Thank you. Chair Garrett, members of the board, esteemed guests. Such a pleasure to ask you to support this, this item. Jerry Streeter is Mr. Baseball in Stanislaus County. For the last fifty or sixty years, he has lived this sport and brought such great pleasure to so many. Let me give you an example. I am in the Senior League Softball Association for Stanislaus County. And the other day I came back to the sport after two years away due to COVID. And I had to reference the book written by Mr. Streeter called Basic Infield Play by Jerry Streeter. And I read it the other day and I realized how much I didn't know about playing infield as I'm the shortstop for my team. This gentleman has been a second father to hundreds of young men in this community. And we really appreciate your support tonight for the naming of the MJC baseball field in honor of Jerry Streeter. Thank you.
Thank you, George Bertrukas. I think our policy also says that, that the Yosemite Community College Chancellor will weigh in as well on, on a recommendation. So Chancellor Young, do you have a final, final comment and recommendation of the Board of Trustees on this item?
Well, thank you, Chair Garrett. I have. On the basis of the contribution made by the late Jerry Streeter and the recommendation of Dr. Budrukas and Dr. Banda Badi, I am endorsing the item in consideration for the board's approval.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor Young. Is, does anyone have any further questions or comments from, from either of the three individuals presenting? Graciela?
I, I do see trustee Nicolau has a raised hand, but I know that there was a member of the public interested in, in speaking, so I'm not sure what you'd like to take first.
I'm flexible, so I'll go with trustee Nicolau. I saw her hand go up first. So trustee Nicolau.
Let's go with the public comment first. Actually have a, my question's related to the policy.
Okay, all right. So Graciela, if you could, please, members of the public who we love to hear from.
Okay, there's a member of the public would like to raise their hand. I do see Mr. Ken Cunningham. I can assist if you'd like to share your video and unmute yourself.
Mr. Cunningham, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ken Cunningham, and I represent the Streeter family and the more than one thousand players who support this proposal. I was honored to both play and coach with Jerry Streeter and to be associated with him for many years in athletics and with his family. We also, as you've heard, have the support of the MJC Athletic Department, the President's Office, the Foundation, and the Associated Students of MJC. I thank you in advance for your valuable time tonight. We're grateful to be heard. We're asking for your support in naming the baseball facility after the late Jerry Streeter. His fifty years associated with Modesto Junior College included playing sports here, coaching here and teaching here. His many accolades for his service include being honored in both the MJC and the CIF Halls of Fame, helping over one hundred athletes go on to a four-year school or professional baseball, coaching MJC's National Championship Football Team of nineteen eighty with his good friends Dick Lloyd and Bob Hoy, and spending two springs in charge of all minor league infield instruction with the Chicago Cubs. Jerry had impacted many players that went on to become local high school coaches, guided many successful high school and sports officials that took his MJC a sports officiating class here. In this limited time, it's difficult to convey or express a tremendous respect in the athletic and baseball world that Coach Streeter earned. He spent over fifty years here, trained future coach Bo Ilo, was invited by respected college coaches to train their infielders and was involved with professional baseball for fifteen years. Jerry was also instrumental in helping local Major League Baseball players such as Joe Rudy and Ray Langford reach stardom. He helped develop the outstanding playing service at MJC and was generally recognized as the number one baseball authority in our area. Lastly, I know it's important for the schools to know that many community leaders had an association with Jerry, and they will support this project. A few of these people would be George Foster of Foster Farms, Phil Mistagney, Tom Ekin, Metastoke Tobacco and Candy and Danny Costa. I thank you for your time and I'll answer any questions you have about Jerry and his career at MJC, and we do hope for a successful vote tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, thank you for, for your time this evening and sharing with us the, the background and, and history of, of Mr. Streeter. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or, or comments for Mr. Cunningham? Okay, I'm not seeing any, but I know trustee Nicolau had a, had a policy question. So trustee Nicolau.
I'm on going record, this all sounds really great to me, but my question mostly from a learning curve is related to the administrative policy sixty-six twenty. So I'm hoping that trustee Biggs or Hinton can help me. The way I'm reading this is, and I'm looking at page fifty-three of one twenty-two for the board and for the public, page two of three under the naming of facility. The way I'm reading it is naming opportunities should be proposed no earlier than five years from the time of the individual separation from the district or if the person is deceased from the time of their passing. So the point I'm looking for clarity is that five years since passing. And so I'd just like someone to clarify that, please.
Go. Trying to see who's, who's speaking here. Graciela.
Dr. B's hand is up.
Okay, but I heard somebody else. So Dr. B, go ahead.
The way I read that policy is it's a five year, it's either or, it's not and. Mr. Streeter separated from the district much longer than five years. And what I have understood is another part also, particularly the deceased clause that we bring in, a five year is if something happens to an individual and immediately we bring something, there's a lot of emotional association to do it. So that's why that cool-off period. But in case of this one, if we apply the policy and I read this one, I talked to George and we had a lot of conversation that is within the framework of the policy. In my determination, I think it's within the policy that it's either or, it's not and. And because five years separation has happened, it is not in violation of this policy, very much in agreement with the policy. I don't know, George, if you want to add anything to it, what I said.
Yes, as the crafter of the language, I will say that the word or was specifically chosen. So it's either or so it's the individual's separation from the district or if the person is deceased. So it's either one of those in, in place. And in this case, Mr. Streeter was separated from our district far more than five years.
Dr. Richards.
I move, we approve this?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Dr. Milton Richards and a second by trustee Nancy Hinton to approve the agendized item. And I just for point of clarification, we read into the, this, this has been a request that has been many years in the, in the making. This came to the board many years ago. So I see it as a continuation of that, that early request. So, so that's how I see it. So we have a motion in a second and roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee, vice chair Baggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
The vote is six zero unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll move on now to item eight point two, Board Policy Second Reading. And Nancy wants to lead us off, or Nancy can defer to Kim. I'll leave it up to you, Nancy.
Um, I'd like to pull six three zero five and yield back to you, Chair Garrett, on your suggestion earlier to bring it back and let's just see what the will of the board is, because I think that is the will of the people that have spoken tonight.
Okay, so, so the recommendation from the Policies and Procedure Committee Chair is to pull six three zero five and, and have further discussion on that. So we'll turn it over to Kim for the remaining balance of the policies that are on the agenda for second reading. Sorry to do that to you, Kim, but you're, you're, you're up to bat.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chair Garrett. Just for clarification purposes, polling it, are we bringing it back again at the main meeting for a second reading? Or the previous recommendation from the Board Policy Committee was to have a third reading. So we just need. So we just need to have the clarification on that.
It will be in the will of the board.
Okay, okay.
All right.
We'll, we'll, uh, out of respect for you, Kim, let's, let's do the remaining balance of those policies that are up for second reading, and then we'll take a deeper dive to 6305.
Okay. Um, the only policy revision that was provided was from, um, regards to policy 6305. So I will take any questions on the other six that are before you. Um, the Board Policy Committee did not have any revisions on those.
Okay, so with that, any, any questions from trustees with respect to those other, uh, policies up for second reading, absent 6305? So do I have a, 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 a motion to, to approve those, uh, for second reading? Absent, absent 6305?
A move.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by trustee Nancy Hinton. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Beggs. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trust, Vice Chair Beggs, pardon me?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richard?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
And the vote is unanimous. A motion carries.
Okay, let's revisit 6, 6305. What, what's the, what's the consensus here?
I think we need to return it to the beginning of the District PNP program and have it go through the process. It will delay it, but I think, uh, with the conversations from everyone, it's something that we need to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's and, um, take it back, and it'll come back to us and we can, um, after it's been worked out by the constituent groups.
Hey, is that okay with everyone? Any disagreement? I'm not seeing any. Okay.
Um, Darren, I, I think it's a, a really good idea, and, and I support this. And, and I think that, um, we, we need to work on our administrative procedures being really clear and, um, not reading like a position paper. We, we keep saying in the Policy Committee that we want our policies to have the attitude of the board toward the thing, our, our philosophy toward it, and the procedures need to be the how. So I think it's really good that this go back and, um, work through the process again, because the first time we saw these was at the meeting on Monday. So thank you very much.
Okay, so that, that's the consensus. So 6305, we'll go back as stated by, uh, Policy and Procedure Committee Chair Nancy Hinton. Okay. So moving on now to 8.3, uh, Board Policy, First Reading. Kimberly?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Garrett. Um, there are 10 policies before you. The policy, Board Policy Committee, um, has provided revisions for Policies 2015, 5035, 7343, and 7-8044. For Policy 7342, it is the request of the Chancellor's Office in consultation with the Human Resources Area Experts that this policy be pulled as it is still under legal review, addressing the questions from the Board Policy Committee meeting on Monday. Pulling Policy 7342 would also require the board to pull Policy 4010 as the same holidays which are being reviewed by legal counsel are also listed in Policy 4010. This concludes my report out for the first readings. I yield back to the chair for, for discussion and any follow-up questions.
Thank you, Kimberly, very much. Any, any questions for Kimberly with respect to those policies up for first read? Okay, thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to item 8.4, YCCD Resolution Number 21-22.21, Classified School Employee Week. And let me make sure I got this right. Oh, looks like I get to talk about this one. Okay. Uh, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopts Resolution 21-22.21 attached to the April 13, 2022 Agenda proclaiming May 15 through the 21st, 2022, it's Classified School Employee Week in the Yosemite Community College District. And thanks Yosemite Community College District classified staff for their commitment and contribution to the district, especially as the COVID-19 pandemic continues. So that is the recommended action. Does anyone want to add or have any comment on this resolution? Well, I would just like to, to add that, yes, we, we, we truly value our classified employees, especially during the COVID-19, uh, pandemic, and their commitment to the district and their commitment to, to, uh, continuing to work onsite, keeping everyone safe, keeping things clean. Uh, I can't say enough of the hard work they've done for, for the district, our students, our fellow employees, and, and for the district community as a whole. So with that, I'll, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Okay, motion moved by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, trustee Beggs finished across the line first. Okay, so we have a second by trustee Beggs. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richard?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes, absolutely.
Vote is six zero unanimous. Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on now to item 8.5, Student Health Fee Increase. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves a health fee increase of $2 effective fall 2022 for Modesto Junior College and Columbia College as listed on the April 13, 2022 Agenda. Does anyone wish to add to this item? Okay, let's not all get excited here. Is there someone who wants to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny. You just saved, just saved the day. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Nancy Hinton. So we have a motion by trustee Jenny Nicolau, a second by trustee Nancy Hinton to approve the recommended action. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
No.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
We'll move on now to item 8.6, YCCD Resolution Number 21-22.19, authorizing opt-in of the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act or CUPCCA. Uh, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopts Resolution, uh, 21-22.19, authorizing central services to opt into the aforementioned, uh, Accounting Act uh, attached to the April 13, 2022 Agenda. And just so you know, we had a, uh, presentation of this at the Finance Committee meeting some time ago, and, uh, Judy Lanchester, our Facilities Director, uh, gave a presentation of the board as well. And I, I want to thank trustee Dr. Milton Richards for his comments at Board Finance and at the, uh, Board of Trustees meeting about reaching out to, uh, various groups to get their input as well, which Judy did, and they were in favor of it, as you recall. So with that, uh, let me make sure that no one is going to speak on this. I do see Trevor Stewart listed. Trevor, do you want to add anything to this?
Only if there's questions from the board.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Uh, any questions of Vice Chancellor Stewart for this action item? Okay?
Just for me, I, I had one question, just because I don't know, I haven't been at any of those other meetings. This sounded really good, so what's the downside?
There isn't one.
There isn't one.
No, there really isn't one. I, I, as, as Darren mentioned, I, I spoke with several union organizations and, and Stewards, and this is just something we should have done a long time ago. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve, Darren.
Okay, we have a motion approved by, uh, Milton Richards, seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. We're on a roll here, folks. Hold on. We're moving fast. Uh, any further questions or comments? And I would just like to add to what, uh, trustee Richard said, and that is it, it, it really brings us up to a higher level of transparency. That's what everybody's really looking forward to. So with that, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Trustee Aguilar? It looks like we've lost trustee Aguilar. Uh, Vice Chair Beggs?
Oh, he's signing back in.
Aye.
Okay, uh, trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Um, trustee Aguilar, we are on item.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is six zero. Motion carries.
Okay, m- moving on now to item 8.6, uh, excuse me, 8.7, 2022 Governance Leadership Institute in Honolulu, Hawaii. Uh, recommended action is that, one, the Board of Trustees discuss whether there is interest to attend the 2022 Governance Leadership Institute in Hawaii. And, two, should there be interest? Identify the team of board members who would participate. So who would like to, to, uh, open this up for discussion?
I, I'd be glad to talk about it. Uh, you know, one thing that I've learned recently as I've been involved in this, uh, possibly getting elected to the State Board, we don't go to events. We don't, we don't send people to, uh, to conferences, and I think part of that's because a lot of people are busy, a lot of people work. Um, I saw this come across the desk, and apparently I believe this is limited to either the board chair or the vice chair. But I just think, and I know it's expensive to go to Hawaii, but I, I just think it's time that we start going to events, um, like this.
Okay, any, anyone else want to comment?
I, I think that's, that's a good point that, that, um, you know, we're always sort of torn between saving the district money and, um, going to, to conferences. And I didn't realize that we were perceived that way, um, mild, but, um, that, that's too bad. That's too bad. So, yeah, I'm ki- I'm open either way. I mean, I think, I think we have to, um, figure this out a, as a group, and, and maybe we should think about, maybe we should look at the whole slate of conferences at some point and decide which ones we think have the most value.
Yeah, I like that idea, and I, and I think, uh, trustee Dr. Milton Richards has brought up a, a, an important issue, and that is, I think, something this board has never had before, and that, and, and I'm not asking to create more work for people, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a useful process, and that is see if there's, if, if there's consensus here on forming an education committee or something like that. Back to Dr. Richard's point of identifying those conferences, uh, that we can sign off on, uh, uh, that have been approved, and that way we don't have to go through this process. You know, we, the, this committee, this education committee has, has, you know, uh, uh, approves it and, and recommends approval to the full board. It gets approved, done. We don't, you know, and then if people want to sign up and go, we have it. So I, I think it's a good, it's a, it's a good issue. So, uh, I think we, we need to, uh, formulate an education committee and identify important educational opportunities for this, for board of, board members to attend. So we stay informed and, and we can network and, you know, find out what other people are doing and, and what works for them and what doesn't work and et cetera. So thank you, Dr. Richards.
Chair Garrett, we, we can definitely put together a list and send it to the board for, for your information on what are the conferences that we typically, uh, will get and provide as much information about the conference. It does change annually, but we can get that to the board. Mm-hmm.
Yep, so wonderful. Okay, thank you, Dr. Richards, for bringing this up. It's long, long overdue. Uh, okay, so, uh, nothing right now, so we'll move on to item 8.8, uh, YCCD Resolution, uh, Number 21-22.15, trustee absence from board meeting. That the Board of Trustees adopts Resolution, uh, 20-21.15.
I, I have to recuse myself and, and abstain, so.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
I'll put you in the waiting room.
Uh, board meeting is attached, uh, to the April 13, 2022 Agenda. And, uh, the other information is there for all to see. It's on the posted agenda, so.
Move to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by, uh,
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Aguilar. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Nancy.
I was way before you.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is, uh, five in favor, one not present for vote, which would be trustee Beggs, and the motion carries.
So can we bring her back from the abyss?
Yes.
Okay. Wait, oh.
He's back.
He's back. Where, where is it? I don't, I'm waiting, waiting, waiting. Leslie, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we'll move on now to item 8.9, YCCD Resolution Number 21-22.20, continuing Board of Trustees' virtual meetings pursuant to AB 361. Who wants to lead this off?
I wouldn't mind, but I can't see if other people's hands are up. Um, we are talking, since I was gone, we were talking about the resolution to hold virtual meetings for the board, correct?
Yep.
Yes, and I, um, feel very strongly that we need to lead the way with going back in person and.
Second that.
Thank you. And, and also, we need to, uh, we need to be flexible, we need, so that if somebody's sick, they can participate via Zoom. Um, but we need to be open to the public, and masks need to be optional like they are in the rest of this town. I was at the, um, Egaware Luncheon, and there were maybe, you know, I want masks to be optional at that luncheon. Um, we had like 300 people, no people walking in, people walking around. Nobody's wearing a mask except for very few people, including our chancellor and our president, no masks. We just need to get back to normal as much as possible and, um, let people, um, choose for themselves the risk they, they wish to take or not take, at, at least at this point, knowing that it can change. So I feel very strongly that we should not keep this going. We need to get back in person.
Okay, so, so we, this was discussed earlier, I think, um, but, I mean, earlier, I mean, in other meetings, this is where the board wants to go, um, and that is getting back to face-to-face. So what's?
Do we, so, all right, do we need a motion, or?
Well, that's what I was, I, I was gonna bring up, so is there, is there a commitment? I think, I think we've got. I think I think we've got a a a sort of a conflicting message here. So I think we're gonna, we're we're committing to meeting face to face at the May meeting, but we're going to adopt the resolution. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, because if we adopted this resolution, we would still be not meeting in person. I believe.
And doesn't this just expire if we don't renew it? So we're back to
No, we're not renewing this resolution.
Yeah, correct.
So, so if I may, the board have the opportunity to meet virtually um through January of twenty-four. The in order to do so, you would need to approve a resolution. It doesn't, it does not preclude the board from coming in person and and holding the meetings here, right? So just wanna make that
Right.
This this allows the opportunity, if someone should be ill and still want to participate, not have to uh assign, you know, uh or put a note on their on their door, and I think trustee has a question.
Yes, trustee Hinton.
If this is passed tonight, I would not be in the meeting tonight and would not be able to participate without having to put um all my information out there for the world to see, and as a single woman, um, don't really feel safe in this day and age, putting it out there for people to be able to come and sit in my living room. But having um been sick this last week and my appreciation for you guys, I would not show up tonight.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Hinton. Trustee Bex?
Can I look at the last paragraph? It says, be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees of YCCD finds that due to the state of emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health or safety of attendees and or the state of emergency continues to directly impact the ability of the members to meet safely in person, et cetera, et cetera. So this needs to be writ rewritten so that we can meet in person and still, like a high flex classroom, like we were talking about earlier, where we can meet in person, we can choose whether or not to wear masks, but people who are sick, like Nancy is right now, could still participate from home without having to put a notice on her door, inviting anyone to come in who wants to attend the meeting. So I I moved, I think we need to move that this be rewritten so that it can go either way, because the way it's written, it sounds like we're still saying it's not safe to meet, period.
I would second that, Leslie, if you made that motion.
Well, I think, to be fair, I think the 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 resolution before us is what has been presented. If we don't if we if we don't agree with it in content, um I I don't know if we want to spend time rewriting the whole thing right now or or just make a commitment that in May, we're going back face to face. And we can, and then we can um take up a new uh version of the resolution uh at our May meeting.
Well, I I would like to be, I've asked to have this rewritten several several times, and I see that the reference to the Delta variant was finally taken out. But I believe that this needs a more wholesale rewrite, and I'd be happy to help with that, because it hasn't happened yet.
We did take the board's direction with regards to last meeting. It was to reflect the current pandemic, and so it was we would definitely appreciate whatever um suggestions that you have, and then we can run that by legal, so that is not a problem.
Thank you.
Trustee Nicolau?
Thank you, Chair Garrett. Um, I'd like to see this expanded beyond COVID. My family and I had the flu this week. And we're feeling better today, but I would not come around you all today, and I would not be part of this meeting. So um I'm in favor of this being flexible. I fully want us together in person. That's how we should be operating. But I think there's a respect for the health and safety of people, COVID, yes, but beyond COVID. And so I would support a rewrite that looks at this uh with health and safety as a whole, with the true intention of us being together. Um, so I'd support a rewrite, just bigger.
So just point of clarification, so this would be a rewind rewrite through the period that we have through January twenty twenty-four? Or are you?
I I would suggest indefinitely, but um twenty twenty-four sounds right. We're we're in an age when we should be together, we're in an age when we should be flexible, we're in an age where we should care about protecting each other. So I I don't see a timeline or a deadline to any of those things.
I think I think the flexibility that we have through the Brown Act ends January of twenty twenty-four, and beyond that, I think we would have to just abide by Brown Act unless at the legislative level that changes. And so I I just want to make a point that it would likely only be twenty twenty-four unless we see any legislative changes.
That's correct.
That's perfect.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't think we can take action on this tonight because uh we don't have a rewrite in front of us, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't be fair for by legal. So
You want to, do you want to take action on the item the way it exists, and then we can work on legal for next month? Or or do you not want to take action, and then everybody comes back in person? And we cannot have, we don't have remote.
Well, if we don't take action, it would still be in place. So why don't we just table it? And let Leslie and you work on a rewrite and then deal with it the next meeting?
No, we 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 have to pass it on a monthly basis. That's the problem. So we, yeah, that's that's the rules.
Okay.
AB three sixty-one. So my recommendation is we we pass it. I have every intention of being present at the May meeting. Um, and and I know Antonio does and others, so let's let's pass it, and then and then that way we're protected, and then we can get the rewrite uh with with uh help from uh uh our attorney, Gracielle, and trustee bags. And then we'll have that rewritten resolution before us for the May meeting. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. By by trustee Antonio Aguilar. Roll call though, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Hi.
Vice Chair Bex?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richard?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau? Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is six zero, unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on now to nine point one, request for future board agenda items. No one?
Trustee Bex.
Trustee Bex?
Yeah, I have one, and it's related to uh our current policy uh that's up for first reading on student members. Um, years ago, uh, one of our um student trustees, uh Ziegfried Gudensberger, and I'm probably saying his name wrong, because I always did. Um, thought that we should have two trustees at the same time, one from Columbia, two student trustees, and one from MJC. And I think that's a really good, good idea. And also because it takes so long to get the lay of uh the land in a new position, I think they should be two-year terms. As long if the student, you know, we have students who are often here for longer than two years, so it might not work out all the time. But I think it would be a really more involving of our students. They'd be more um acclimated to the board if we had like the second year of somebody from Columbia is the first year of somebody from MJC, so that they were staggered terms. And so I'd like to have a discussion item where we could talk about that and possibly amending that policy so that we would have two um student trustees at a time, you know, assuming they're elected, but that might not always work. And uh I think that we would have much more involvement if if we did that. And and with a two-year term, I think they'd they'd really um understand what's going on better, because it's almost like you get, you get into it and your your term is up. So I I'd like to have a discussion about that.
Well, our student trustee to the board is here tonight, so um any any comments?
Uh, thank you, Chair Garrett. Um, thank you, trust trustee bags. I I agree that the I've been actually reflecting as I've been coming to the end of my my term, and it's it's as if by the time I get to a place where I'm s- I'm starting under to understand what's going on and how to best serve the students, it's now I'm I'm going to leave soon. And so uh I don't know necessarily if I like two year, a two-year term, who would be around to be able to fulfill that? Sometimes we have students that will be, sometimes we might not. And but I def- I definitely can see how a little bit longer term can um can can help. Um, also in regards to having two trustees. Um, I I also think that 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 could possibly be helpful. Um, just because there's so much communication that has to be done between both campuses, it can become difficult to get get the best opinion of the students as a whole um uh to the board. Uh, and so I I think these are, these are great ideas that should definitely be discussed and and thought about. Um, I I don't, um, yeah, I I I think they're they're good ideas to be discussed.
So with that, I think maybe the proper way to handle this out of out of respect for the process and our and our and our student governance and and uh both associated students at MJC and at Columbia. Our student trustee, uh, why don't you set up a meeting and and start the start the ball rolling? Um, and uh have that communication. We can look at the legal aspect of it about having two um uh elected student trustees on the board and um start the process there, and with the idea that they come back uh at a future board meeting, uh, agendize and give a presentation on on their feedback and what they found out and what they want to do. So, and and I think also it would help if those terms are staggered. So so you're not, you know, one can, one can sort of educate and mentor uh the new one coming in, I think would be
Exactly.
Would be a great
That's why I suggested that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and it would be a great benefit, because I know it was a little frustrating for the board and and for the chancellor and his team uh when when there was a gap and we didn't have a a a student representative on the board. And and trying to facilitate that and light a fire under people that we really need to get somebody from the student body to to uh represent them on the board. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but we need to respect the governance process. So if you could take that back to your respective uh peers at at the uh two associated student groups at Columbia and MJC, that would be appreciated. So we'll do.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
If I may, I know this, the student member policy comes up on an annual basis. Before the new student member is going to be on the board, Arshia is, his last meeting will be May. We have a new uh student trustee coming in uh in June. And then as, you know, you heard from the association reports, the two, the two students um associated student body presidents. This was their last meeting, and so there is going to be a new, a new wave of students that Arshia will likely pass the baton to.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Anyone else? I have one uh of of the chancellor and of the Modesto Junior College president. Uh, we've talked about it long enough. I wanna, I wanna agendize an item where we start the ball rolling on rehabilitating our football field at Modesto Junior College. Uh, it's, it it is a something that should have been included in major E. It's, it is used and has been used for years widely by by uh not only uh our athletic programs, but other external groups and community groups. There's people out there that use it all the time, so I want to get the ball rolling and and be respectful of the process. But uh it it's something that needs to start moving along. So how that happens, uh I'll leave that up to the uh subject matter experts internally. I know uh Judy Lanchester has some some ideas on it, and maybe this is something we can get the foundation involved in and and really create something special. So that's, that's uh um, that's what I want. That's my request. And I think trustee Dr. Milton Richards and trustee Antonio Aguilar will will join me in that in that effort. Yep, I'm getting thumbs up and a nod.
I'll se- I'll second that. We've been talking about it for long enough.
Okay, thank you. So chancellor, thank you. You can reach out to to uh the MJC college president and and whatnot and and get the ball rolling. And again, I want to be respectful of the process. But I think this is something that 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 we can really uh get community involvement in, and the community can be proud of of what we're doing for for uh that that uh facility. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, nine point two, comments from the Board of Trustees, trustee Jenny Nicolau.
Efficient meeting. Well done, sir.
Thank you. Uh, actually, I should have gone trustee Dr. Milton Richards first, so uh Milton.
Everything's good, thank you. Not no comments.
You're sure about that?
I'm sure, yes, thank you.
Everything's flowing along good?
Yes. Goodbye.
Goodbye. Uh, Antonio Aguilar?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Coming around.
All right. Hey, trustee Nancy Hinton?
Um, just thanks for a great meeting. Glad that we're moving on collegially and moving on forward.
Okay, trustee Leslie Bakes?
Uh, again, thank you for an efficient meeting, and um I look forward, I really look forward to seeing people in person next time, unless I'm sick, but otherwise, I'll be there.
Okay. I'm gonna give the the last comment and opportunity to our student trustee.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. Uh, good evening uh board members and Chancellor Young and anyone else uh here tonight. Um, uh, since the, since our last board meeting, I've uh attended several meetings, um such as policy procedure meetings and um the most recent meeting, I had the honor of uh attending the board policy commi- uh board policy committee committee, yeah, board policy committee, that's the name. I apologize. But uh, which I was thrilled to be a part of, uh to help share student perspective on. Um, earlier of last month or later of last month, I also met with Dr. Tran um of Columbia College, where I formerly was able to meet um and support the ASCC uh in getting a, getting the ball rolling and and being a part of uh the idea of beautification of the campus. Um, so I was really excited for um all that, and I also want to congratulate and uh thank our associated student presidents, Ricky and Maria. Uh, they have done so much for both campuses and the Senate along with them. They sacrificed so much. Um, it's it's always been really inspirational for me, just to, just to see that happening, how much uh these students do for for each campus, um and how much they care. So congratulations uh to both of them. Um, other than that, I have been focusing on communicating with students to really understand what resources it is that they are going to be needing going into the summer semester. And um really trying to hear their voice on that, uh considering the fact that things have changed a little bit. Now now we're doing more hybrid, we're doing in person, but you know, online. Kind of seeing what are the resources that they'd like to see from both campuses in regards to their courses. So um, as always, thank you, and uh if you have any questions, please uh feel free.
Arshia, thank you. Thank you very much for everything and uh and your continued involvement in this important endeavor. Thank you very much. I have nothing to add. I I have nothing to add, I know.
Quick question.
Sorry, sorry.
To us, our student trustee.
Yes.
So is this your last meeting or you, you gonna join us next, uh, next meeting?
I believe I will be there next meeting.
Okay, cause I haven't had a chance to meet you, so hopefully we can meet and talk for a little bit there back in the college.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna suspend my thirty-five minute PowerPoint and, and, uh, we'll, uh, adjourn this meeting. The next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on May eleventh. Oh, wait, I'm getting a hand raised by, uh, Graciela Molina.
Oh, no, you're gonna address the May meeting, but I also wanted to mention the board strategic conversation.
Okay, go ahead.
So the board will have a strategic conversation, special meeting focused on student success and outcomes on April twentieth, twenty twenty-two, which is a Wednesday from four to six P M.
Thank you very much. And with that, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on, anyone else? Nope, okay, I'm gonna keep moving here, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Close session will begin at three P M, fifteen hundred hours, open session at five thirty P M, seventeen thirty hours. And with that, I wish you all a wonderful evening. Good night.